Good evening. I would like to welcome everyone to the regular scheduled city council meeting of Wednesday, December 6, 2023. Regular meeting will be at 5:00 and Truth and Taxation at 6:00 p.m. tonight. Let the record show all councilors are present except for Councilor James Pavis. We'll add and deletes, delete bids and quotes, number four, B, add license permits, number seven, and number eight. Move on to approval of agenda. Wishes of the council?
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Councilor Fossil.
Support.
Board by Councilor Schweber. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carries. Okay, approve of the minutes of Hibbing City Council Meeting, November 15th, 2023. Wishes of the council.
Motion approve.
Motion approved by Councilor Whitney.
Support.
Board by Councilor Jennifer Hoffman-Sockman. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carries. Move on to consent agenda. Approve accounts payable dated 11/22/2023, checks number 176040 through 176062, an amount of $780,384.86. Checks number 121/2023, checks number 176063 through 176151, an amount of $1,368,820.66. Two, approve the city payroll for pay period ending 11/17/2023, checks number 168850 through 168860, an amount of $557,605.39. Three, acknowledge resignation of Patrick Jensen, full-time maintenance with the City Service Department, effective December 1st, 2023. Four, authorize posting of a full-time maintenance position with the City Services Department. Five, authorize posting of temporary full-time equipment operator in the Public Works Department. Six, authorize the posting of a temporary full-time automotive mechanic in a sanitation department. Seven, authorize the hire of Richard Lucine for the full-time equipment operator one for the Public Works Department, pending pre-employment contingencies. Number eight, authorize the hire of Jack Beatty for full-time skilled labor for Public Works Department, pending pre-employment contingencies. Number nine, authorize the hire of Cherry Erickson-Skull for the full-time library technician for the Hibbing Public Library, pending pre-employment contingencies. Number 10, authorize the hire of Jill Rainey for the temporary full-time library technician for the Hibbing Public Library, pending pre-employment contingencies. Eleven, authorize the mayor to sign a letter supporting the appointment of Commissioner Michael Jugovic to the LCCMR Board of Directors. Twelve, appoint Councilor Justin Fossil as a 2024 City of Hibbing Rams representative and Councilor Jennifer Hoffman-Sockman as a 2024 City of Hibbing Rams alternative. Thirteen, authorize the Hibbing City Council to attend the North St. Louis County Water and Conservation District Board Supervisors and Staff Open House for the elected officials on Wednesday, December 13th, 2023, at 5:03, Third Street, North Suite A, Virginia, Minnesota. Fourteen, set the next regular meeting for Wednesday, December 20th, 2023, at 5:00 p.m. in the Hibbing City Council Chambers. Fifteen, set the next city council workshop for Wednesday, December 20th, 2023, following the regular meeting in the Hibbing City Hall Council Chamber. Items previously approved, set a special city council meeting for Wednesday, December 13th, 2023, at 5:00 p.m. in the Hibbing City Hall Council Chambers. Authorize the Hibbing City Council to attend the Fire Department Recognition Dinner on Saturday, December 9th, 2023, at the Do U. And a reminder, authorize the Hibbing Public Library Yuletide Festival on Thursday, December 7th, at the Library. Wishes of the council?
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve the consent agenda as read and published.
Motion by Councilor Hoffman-Sockman.
Support.
Support by Councilor Hildebrand. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carries. We'll move on to public forum, and we do have one sheet. And it's Robert. Robert, if you could come up and state your name and address and go before the podium, please.
Ready?
Yep, we're ready for you. Robert, we need you to go before the podium up there. Thank you. And please state your name and address just for the record.
All right. Well, doing work as a caregiver for a Hibbing nursing home patient, I found frustration in another example of bureaucracy, namely the ambulance contract. Spent many hours on this thing, talking to different people. I doubt if the taxpayer is aware of the fine print in this one agreement, the earlier agreement. It says in order to submit a claim, a payment claim for ambulance service, one must provide a signature. If not, my insurance company allows EMS to bill for the full amount in excess of $1,685. The patient's signature states if the insurance company doesn't pay all that is requested, then the patient must agree to make up the balance. Also, the patient must agree to allow this EMS.com to access personal health information. Why should anyone allow that? In my case, the last two years, I've received letters from U University, Minnesota, a pharmaceutical company, an insurance company, alerting me that their files have been hacked, and I am one of them that's been exposed. They offered me a free year of experience or another company to protect my credit, but first I must allow them access to my personal information. Why should I trust them? Is my understanding that the city receives about a half of the half of that amount for the general fund? So I question, just in what kitty does the balance go? In this city, taxpayers already paying for the manpower, the equipment, the training for the fire department? In cases of volunteer fire departments, the situation differs. Nowhere in this agreement, this earlier Wheeling EMS agreement, does it ask the name of insurance carrier or patient ID. This information is probably available to the ambulance crew from the hospital. I made copies of the later agreement on the back of some of these EMS statements. Now, what gets interesting is, in October of 2022, the city agreed to allow this out-of-state EMS come to do their billing in place of a local company. The senior nursing home resident was in transport at the end of May at 2023. I started putting things in order during October. I called EMS.com, but couldn't get anybody answered the phone. I stopped at the hospital, spoke to someone there, and they could not get an answer. I left. I called the insurance company. They couldn't get anyone to talk to them until the following week. I later checked and found that the insurance company had already paid this thing, but left a copay of $59, which was then paid by the patient. EMS kept sending statements. EMS.com then sent another statement for September Transport requesting another signature and a fine print allowing access to personal information. One should note, the wording indicates an earlier signature was all that required. In other words, if you signed once, it says that that's good for forward and backwards. You shouldn't have to sign again. So in compliance, the signed form was returned to EMS. Soon another EMS.com came out of Louisville, North Carolina. This first one was Wheeling, Wheeling, Illinois. So they sent us different worded statement, which is a better wording statement, requesting payment for a September. The patient informed EMS.com Louisville, North Carolina, the signature had been sent. Now they must do their part and contact the insurance company. So the city, I think, has done a poor job of contracting an out-of-state bill collector when they had local people doing it. And what I really disagree with is the fine print on these signature statements. And it releases the information that they're requesting. I feel that, like I said, that there's too much theft of information, and I've been exposed to it. I know what it's all about, and I figured that why should anyone else have to put up with this? So I asked this question. Why doesn't the hospital bill the insurance company? Eliminate the need for a middleman. I asked the hospital why they don't do it, and they said they don't do it. Well, I don't know why they don't do it. And in other words, this EMS, why are they even involved?
Well, I appreciate your opinion, and this is an open forum, and for you to express your concerns. We don't do formal action on, we will listen. And Sheena, you might be able to answer a little bit as far as billing. You had made one question, you made one comment about a certain percentage goes back to cover the costs of our ambulance service, yes? Other than that?
Well, I think, yes. So there is a levy for the ambulance service, but the levy is the offset to what we're getting for the fees for service. So if someone is transported by our ambulance or has a run in town here and then pays, and then it comes back to Hibbing Ambulance Service, that's a direct revenue offset to the levy then that we're putting across the taxpayers when we spread the levy.
Well, it's a reimbursement, in a sense.
Yes.
Yes. It's not padding anything, it's a reimbursement. Thank you. Okay. We will move on to department and committee reports. Public Works Director, Mr. Story?
Mayor Council, before you is a resolution 23-12-01, accepting the transfer of a used 2019 Ford F-450 bus from East Pol County. This is pending or contingent on FTA approval, so the resolution is part of that approval from the FTA. So I'm asking that the council approves the resolution.
Hearing what Mr. Story had to say, wishes of the council?
Motion approve.
Motion approved by Councilor Schweber.
Support.
Support by Councilor Hoffman-Sockman. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carries. B, Jesse.
Mayor Council, before you is a resolution 23-12-02. This is authorizing the city Hibbing to apply for CDBG funds for the Phase 12 of the sanitary sewer lining project.
Okay. Mr. Story's looking for authorization for the lining project. Wishes of the council?
Motion approve.
Motion approved by Councilor Whitney.
Support.
Support by Councilor Hoffman-Sockman. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carries. Thank you, Jesse.
Thank you.
Building official, Mr. Green.
Eric, I think I'm taking that one for Pat tonight. Mayor members of the council, within your pack, it is a proposed resolution with regard to an amendment to a planned development, or JP development. This came before the Planning Commission previously for a request to modify the planned development, which was for multifamily homes in that area. And this was a request to turn them into single-family homes with respect to specific lots in Block 1 of Masabi Pines. Planning Commission looked at that, believed it was appropriate. I will tell the council that back in 2010 or 2013, the council had approved a resolution allowing single-family homes in other blocks and blocks within Masabi Pines.
Okay.
So it's not that this is the first time this has happened. Anyway, the Planning Commission recommended approval. They had a public hearing on it. It needs to come before the council for your consideration this evening.
Okay. So a resolution, as Andy said, regarding development block grant for single-family homes, development of single-family homes in the Masaba Pines. Wishes of the council?
Motion approve.
Second?
Support.
Support by Councilor Hildebrand. Motion by Councilor Schweber. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carries. Thank you. I'm sorry, I next B and A there for a minute. We move on to City Administrator, Mr. Przinski.
Mayor City Council, two items from my office this morning. So item number one is our last meeting will come up on the 20th of December, two weeks from tonight. We will deliver our annual report to the city council and our residents of Hibbing. And then also that evening, City Administrator Performance Review will take place. It'll be in a closed session. We did send out a survey to the city council, self-described. I mean, the directions are in there, and I think there's a time block in there. So just wanted to let the city council know that, but then also our city residents, what's going on when it comes to that annual report and then that review. So nothing further from my office this evening.
Very good. Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Przinski? Hearing none, we'll move on to bids and quotes. Again, Mr. Story?
Mayor Council, I'm asking to purchase all-season tires for our number 34 John Deere loader. This is a loader that we ordered the snow pusher previously. It has come in, we did put it on. The tires that are on there are for a summer season, so when we start pushing snow, it's just gonna spin. So we did get a price from POMPS. They'll give us $2,400 in trade for existing tires. The total cost is $10,448.88. And talking with Josie in the finance department, we can split that between sanitation, the recycle center, and city services. We'll be using this to plow parking lots, plow the recycle center, plow our alleys. So we can pull those funds from there, and I'm asking for council approval.
Very good. Hearing what Mr. Story had to say, wishes of the council?
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Councilor Fossil.
Support.
Support by Councilor Schweber. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carries. B, Jesse.
Mayor Council, we got a quote here for a garbage truck cylinder for our Pac-Mar trucks. We did have to replace one of the cylinders on one of our existing trucks. This is a cylinder we like to keep on the shelf, so there's no downtime when we have to replace it. So this will just, we will purchase this, we'll put it in our inventory, and then we'll code it once we use that. The cost is $15,425 from Hydrolix Specialty, and I'm asking for council approval.
Wishes of the council?
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Councilor Hoffman-Sockman.
Support.
Support by Councilor Whitney. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carries. C.
Mayor Council, attaches a quote estimate from Hartel's for 12 rear-low two-yard containers, four four-yard containers, and six six-yard containers for sanitation. We do need these containers. They sit out in the weather, the bottoms rust out, we can't fix them. So this is what we need right now to keep the sanitation department moving. The quote is in the amount of $23,770, and I'm asking for council approval.
A looking for support for garbage containers, wishes of the council?
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Councilor Whitney. Support by Councilor Fossil. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carries. Thank you. C.
Mayor Members of the council, so at the county public works facility, we don't have steamers to clean off our equipment. And if you go through and look at our equipment compared to some of the county and state stuff, you can tell a difference in rust on the bodies, rust on the undercarriages from the salt, because we do not have a steam pressure washer. So we'd like to put one on each end of the building, a pressure washer, so we can start taking better care of our equipment. We do have a new fleet manager. He's been going through the entire fleet and looking at what we can do better for upkeep on our fleet. So we'd like to get two land-to-steam pressure washers. For both of them, it's $16,884. Both Public Works and sanitation will benefit from this. We can have equipment from City Services. Any department can come over and use them, they're inside. So I'm asking for council approval for this purchase.
All right, we're looking for approval for two land-to-steam pressure washers. Wishes of the council?
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve.
We have a motion by Councilor Hoffman-Sockman.
Support.
Support by Councilor Hildebrand. Any discussion? Jesse, are these gonna be right in the main bay where they park, or?
These, yeah, these will be, no, these will be in the main bay where they park. It'll be right to the side of the big overhead door.
Yep.
Each pressure washer has two outlets, so we can wash two pieces of equipment at a time on each one.
Okay. And you'll just use the new floor drains they put in for their drainage then?
Yes.
Very good. Hearing no other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carries.
E. Mayor Council Members, if you recall, we brought one of our loaders down to McCoy here a while back to get all the pins and bushings replaced on it. Once we got it down there, the pins and bushings that were in it were not greasable, and we were changing them to greasable pins and bushings. Once we got it down there, they were all froze in there, so they had to get them out. We had to do a bunch of welding and boring on the loader to put the new ones in. So there was additional cost for that. The total additional cost was $9,915.51. We do have the loader back, everything is working good. It's a lot better than what it was, so now we can grease everything on the loader where before we couldn't. So I'm asking for approval to pay this invoice from McCoy for $9,915.51.
Okay, replacement parts from McCoy for the loader. Wishes of the council?
Motion approve.
Motion approved by Councilor Schweber.
Support.
Support by Councilor Fossil. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carries. Thank you, Jesse.
Thank you.
We'll move on to Fire Chief, Mr. Jenklin.
Evening, Mayor and Council. The first item we have for you is to purchase three sets of turnout gear for new hires. You guys have allowed us to give every person one new set, and then we have some compliant used sets, and this is just to keep up with that. Given the timeframe that's been taking us to get the gear, we'd like to get it ordered now. And Jefferson Fire and Safety is our new supplier for the brand that we use, and the price came in at, it's actually $10,531.41, because I neglected to add the $90 for shipping. And this is a budgeted $240 expense for this year.
For this shirt? Okay, hearing what Mr. Jenklin had to say about turnout gear, wishes of the council?
Motion approve.
Motion approved by Councilor Whitney.
Support.
Support by Councilor Hildebrand. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carries. P, Eric.
The next item for you is to pay an invoice to Northland Tractor. Our engine two suffered a catastrophic rear spring failure, or leaf spring failure, so we had to get it fixed. When they brought it in, they discovered that we had some air brake problems. After speaking with Joe, Fleet Manager, it was just decided that this is better to be shipped out. We confirmed with Mr. Przinski, and we've had the work done. The truck is back in service. I'm just asking to pay the invoice to Northland Tractor for $6,802.31.
Okay, we're looking for support for repair on leaf springs and air brakes. Wishes of the council?
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Councilor Fossil.
Support.
Support by Councilor Schweber. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carries. C, Eric.
The third item that we have for you is to purchase a 2025 Ford E450 ambulance with a gas engine from Brown Northwest in the amount of $249,015. This is in the capital for 2024. One of the things that is nice about this, the last ambulance that we ordered is about $70,000 or $80,000 more than this one. There is some chassis availability that has not been available since pre-pandemic, which is basically the cutaway van styles. Our crews like them. It's obviously a lot cheaper. They are available to order right now, so we'd like to jump on it. And also, if we place the order now before January 1st, we save a 10% increase in pricing. The low bid or low quote was Brown Northwest. The next one in line, we did get six or seven, was $279,000. And we're still, no matter what vendor, we're still about a 500-day out on builds, but we're optimistic that that'll be a little bit quicker. So we would request that the council allow us to place this order.
All right, hearing what Mr. Jenklin had to say, wishes of the council?
Motion approve.
Motion approved by Councilor Schweber.
Support.
Support by Councilor Hoffman-Sockman. Discussion. You have Brown Northwest or ambulance right now?
Yeah, that's the vendor that we've used for the last couple of purchases. We are not vendor-specific.
Right.
In terms of, you know, the Ford is the Ford, the chassis is the chassis. The last three purchases that we've made, they've just been significantly cheaper.
Well, that's the point, is making you have them now. You're very comfortable with them. They seem to like them.
Yep. So again, now that we have Joe McKenney on board as the fleet manager, we're bringing him up to speed on how ambulances are built and things like that. So he sat with us in when we've done a lot of this inbound talking. So we've run the van-style ambulances for years. We just haven't been able to order one at all pre-pandemic, and they're on the docket for build, and we can get one.
This was budgeted for 2024, correct, Sheena? So it's not a problem putting the order in now, in 2024. You're comfortable with it.
Yep.
All right, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carries. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
We move on to City Service Director, Nick Corolla.
Good evening, Mayor Council. First thing I have for you tonight is request approval for a purchase of a Lele pole spreader from MTI Distributing. This would be a new fertilizer spreader for the parks, golf course, and baseball fields. Our current one's 25-plus years old, and we're looking to upgrade that. We do have some capital funds that were left over from purchases earlier this year, and we have little savings on some of those purchases, so we'd like to purchase this now instead of next year, and award the bid to MTI Distributing, which is state contract pricing at $7,370.
Very good. Hearing what Mr. Corolla had to say regarding a pole spreader, wishes of the council?
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Councilor Fossil.
Support.
Support by Councilor Hildebrand. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carries. B, Nick.
B is the request of approval to purchase a utility trailer from Pine River in the amount of $3,780.81. This is a 14-foot steel PJ brand utility trailer, again, updating our current model that is roughly from the 80s. We're not exactly sure. But the trailer, again, is mainly used for our mobile units, pulling the mowers around to the different parks and things like that. Just looking for your approval, $3,780.81. Again, this would come from the City Services capital, and any overage would come from our parks' operating budget, so.
Very good. Wishes of the council regarding the new trailer.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve.
Motion approved by Councilor Hoffman-Sockman.
Support.
Support by Councilor Whitney. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carries. C, Nick.
Letter C is requesting approval to purchase a Toro Turf Air Raider, again, from MTI Distributing. This would, again, replace our 1980s model Air Raider that we have had for quite a while. This would, again, be used on all of our sites, the golf course, athletic fields, soccer complex, everything like that. We barely got through this season with our current Air Raider, so we're in desperate need of this for next year. And again, we would be using leftover capital funds from this year and looking to approve that purchase of $10,869.49 to MTI Distributing in state contract pricing again on that one.
Very good. Looking for support for a Toro Turf Air Raider? Wishes of the council?
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Councilor Fossil.
Support.
Support by Councilor Schweber. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carries. D, Nick.
D is the request to approve a quote from Finley Sport for recreation software. So we're already coming up on two years with Civic Rec. In May, our contract is up in May, and you have to give a three-month notice whether you're going to renew or cancel, and otherwise it's an auto renewal. So we would like to, as we've gone through two seasons with the current software, it's just not meeting our needs on the scheduling side of things. It's great for the recreation side, just not the scheduling of ice and the hockey arenas. There's some unique situations when you're scheduling ice and a lot of changes. And Finley Sport is specifically hockey scheduling software. We can schedule everything else with it, but it is more tailored toward the ice industry and kind of the industry standard around Minnesota in scheduling. It also allows us to have digital displays in our lobbies and stuff with locker room assignments, things like that. Our old software, our database, will dump right into the new software, so we won't lose any data and customer information and things like that. So there is a little upfront cost for the training and implementation, but then our annual fee for this is budgeted already and is very comparable to our current system. So just looking for your approval to move forward, and we'd like to begin training this winter in the hockey season, so we're ready to go in May when our next one is up. So looking for... Looking for your approval on that.
Looking for uh new recreational sports software? Uh, wishes of the council?
Motion approved.
Motion approved by Councilor Swiberger.
Support.
Support by Councilor Hildebrand. So this will replace your old system and and you said cost, but it gives you much more flexibility because you had no ice really availability under your own system, but this will cover recreation, summer, fall, plus, and you mentioned something about digital?
Uh, digital signage.
Okay.
Um, it it offers that component to it where you can do digital signage. Um, you can have your your schedules of whatever. You have your locker rooms, your your ice time schedules on uh.
Most arenas are that way now, so yeah, that's definitely the way to go. All right, uh, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carries. Thank you, Nick.
Thank you, guys.
Return to uh Police Chief, Mr. Esti.
Uh, Mayor Council, good evening. Before you, I have to approve the purchase of three squad cars from Central Dodge. This is in the amount of one hundred and twenty one thousand one hundred and forty dollars. We had recently discussed leasing these vehicles and after researching it further, we found it's uh quite a bit of savings to purchase them outright. Uh, so we already approved these. We're just gonna do an outright purchase versus it a lease.
Okay, so the same amount of funding is there?
Yep.
Very good. Hearing what uh Chief Esti had to say, wishes of the council?
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve.
We have a motion approved by Councilor Hoffman Sockman.
Support.
Support by Councilor Fossil. Any other discussion? Uh, timeframe on these, chief?
Um, they actually landed in Minnesota today.
They did?
Yep, so they're going out of their upfittering lane.
Very good. Any other discussion?
Mayor?
Yes?
Chief, are we not gonna do that leasing thing then anymore?
No, definitely not. After uh researching it further with Andy and myself, um there was a lot of hidden fees and stuff that was not worth it for us in the end.
Gotcha. Okay, great.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I have a question. Chief, what is the average lifespan of a of a squad car these days?
Well, um, it kind of depends. So with this new program we're implementing, um, we're hoping to really expand the life of these squads. And then at the end, actually get some residual value from them, or right now when we're getting rid of them, they're not worth anything.
Okay.
So kind of the hope is we can keep them a little bit longer and then at the end of their life cycle, actually get some money back from them.
Good to know. Thank you.
And these will now fall under our fleet manager too as far as as we move forward, so I mean, it's a win-win from many angles. All right, wishes of the council?
Yeah, a motion second.
Oh, yes, sorry. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carries. All right, we will move on to license and permits. One, approve the raffle permit application request of the Hibbing Boys Hoop Club to hold their raffle at the Lincoln Mount Elementary on Saturday, February twentieth, twenty twenty four. Wishes of the council?
Motion approved.
Motion approved by Councilor Whitney.
Support.
Support by Councilor Fossil. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carries. Approve the twenty twenty four cigarette licenses. Wishes of the council?
Motion approved.
Motion approved by Councilor Whitney.
Support.
Support by Councilor Hildebrand. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carries. Three, approve the raffle permit application request of the Hibbing Elks Lodge to hold their bingo on Saturday, March sixteenth, twenty twenty four. Wishes of the council?
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve.
Motion approved by Councilor Hoffman Sockman.
Support.
Support by Councilor Fossil. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carries. Number four, approve the raffle permit application request of the Hibbing Elks Club to hold their raffle on Saturday, April twenty fourth, twenty twenty four at the Dew U. Wishes of the council?
Motion approved.
Motion approved by Councilor Swiberger.
Support.
Support by Councilor Fossil. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carries. Number five, approve the twenty twenty three taxi renewal of the Hibbing Taxi Incorporated. Wishes of the council?
Motion approved.
Motion approved by Councilor Swiberger.
Support.
Support by Councilor Fossil. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carries. Number six, approve the special event permit application of the Range Nordic Glider to hold their Kerry Lake Classic on Saturday, February seventeenth, twenty twenty four at Kerry Lake. Wishes of the council?
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Councilor Fossil.
Support.
Support by Councilor Hildebrand. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carries. Number seven, approve the raffle permit application request of the Angel Fund to hold their raffle on Saturday, February tenth, twenty twenty four at the Hibbing Curlin Club. Wishes of the council?
Motion to approve.
Motion approved by Councilor Hoffman Sockman.
Support.
Support by Councilor Fossil. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carries. Number eight, approve the raffle permit application request of the Hibbing Archery Club to hold their raffle on Thursday, April eleventh, twenty twenty four at the Hibbing Archery Club. Wishes of the council?
Motion approved.
Motion approved by Councilor Swiberger.
Support.
Support by Councilor Fossil. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carries. At this time, I would like to entertain a motion to recess this meeting until six PM where we can start truth and taxation. Uh, so I'm looking for a motion.
Go move.
Go move by Councilor Swiberger. Beckett?
Support.
Support by Councilor Whitney. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carries. But we'll convene back at six. All right. Good evening. I will now entertain a motion to reconvene the meeting of uh Wednesday, December sixth, twenty twenty three in order to start the truth and taxation meeting. Motion, please?
Motion.
Motion by Councilor Whitney.
Support.
Support by Councilor Hildebrand. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? Motion carries. We are now back into our council meeting and we'll move on with truth and taxation public hearing, but first we'll have a presentation from our finance director, Sheena Muller.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council and city of Hibbing residents. Um, can we get the on the screen? There we go. I would like to start off with a truth and taxation presentation um for the proposed twenty twenty four budget and the twenty twenty three levy. The purpose of truth and taxation, it was enacted in nineteen eighty eight and it was enacted to enhance participation in Minnesota's property tax system to educate the public on how property taxes are determined, to encourage the public to understand the local government's budget process and to encourage the public to become involved in helping local officials set spending priorities. So I'll begin by talking about the property tax cycle. In January, the county assessor assesses both real and personal property and then these assessments would be based off of prior year's sales data. By March thirty first, that is the last day for the county auditor to send property tax statements to property owners. That would be the levy that was certified in the prior year, but it would cover the current year's city budget. In March or April, evaluation notices get sent out to property owners. That would be from that January assessment that the um assessors conducted. These values will be used in computing proposed tax statements that will come out in November and then also the final tax statements that come out the following March. In April and May, the local board of appeal of appeal and equalizations convene. This would be the time that you would want to appeal your valuation if you see any discrepancies or don't believe that that is your appropriate value. By May fifteenth, that would be when the first half of your real property taxes would be due from the tax statement that you received in March. By August fifteenth, that is when your property tax refund returns would do be would be due or Form M one PR. That is where you can claim your refund up to one year. You can claim your refund up to one year past that date. By September thirtieth, the preliminary budget and levy must be adopted. The levy and the preliminary budget is reflected in your proposed tax statement. By October fifteenth, the second half of real property taxes is due. That was also on your March tax statement. There should be a second half payment stub that you can make that payment. By November tenth to the twenty fifth, that is when truth and taxation notices get sent out to property owners. The proposed tax statement is based off the preliminary budget and the valuation sent in March. November twenty fifth is the day that truth and taxation meetings can start to occur. And then in the month of December, the city adopts its final budget and levy for taxes that will be paid in the following year. I just wanted to note that the final levy cannot exceed the preliminary levy that was set at the end of September. I also just wanted to tell residents that December thirty first is the last day for real property owners to file a homestead application with the assessor's office. So anyone who owns real property in Hibbing should have received a proposed tax statement already um that they should have just recently got and that would be for the proposed taxes payable in twenty twenty four. Um, now that was, this proposed tax statement is based off the preliminary levy that we certified at the end of September and we are proposing tonight that this levy would be decreased from that nine point nine nine percent increase. Um, so this is the the top section of the proposed tax statement. Um, step one is where it's got the valuations and classification of your property. So the estimated market value, it'll have two columns. It'll show the prior year and then the next year. And the estimated market value is where buyers and sellers, they create the value, so the assessor studies the market. And then the homestead exclusion, that is forty percent of the first seventy six thousand dollars minus nine percent of any value over seventy six thousand dollars. Um, the legis- at the legislative session this year, they did just change that, so the homestead exclusion in twenty twenty four will be actually increasing. Um, so this is this year's homestead exclusion. Um, then the taxable market value, that is estimated market value minus any exclusions, so you take row one minus row two for the exclusion and that would be your taxable market value. In this example, the classification is residential homestead, um but classes and rates are determined by the state, so there's classes like homestead, non homestead, commercial, industrial, et cetera. So you would take your taxable market value times your class rate and then that would determine the tax capacity of your property. I did also just want to note that the first five hundred thousand dollars in taxable market value has a rate of one percent. If there's a property that has a value of higher than five hundred thousand dollars, then anything after that is taxed at a rate of one point two five percent. So then step two of your proposed tax statement and how it was determined is determining the tax capacity extension rate and the net property taxes payable. So you'll take all of the levies. There's the county levy, the school levy, the city levy and and any and any other special levies and then divide that by tax capacity of all the property of the jurisdictions and that is how you get your tax capacity extension rate. So in my example, I I use an example of one hundred and sixty nine percent for the tax extension. You would take that then times that um tax capacity from the slide before and then that is where you get your property tax before credits and this example is two thousand two hundred and fifty three dollars and fifty three cents. And then you would reduce that by any tax credits that you have. Um, so in this example, there is the tachonite supplemental aid. So if you have a homestead in the tachonite area, you get sixty six percent of that up to three hundred and fifteen dollars and ten cents. That would be a tax credit off of your bill. So in this this person's property tax statement, their statement is one thousand nine hundred and thirty eight dollars and forty three. Then on your proposed tax statement, there should be a section that looks like this. Um, it's got all the different meeting informations for the county, the city, the school district. Um, that says the meeting that we're having tonight. That is our truth and taxation meeting uh for the city of Hibbing. So that was where you would be notified about this meeting. Um, so this proposed tax statement is prepared using all jurisdictions preliminary budgets. They don't include any special assessments. So then the final budget and levy adoption. Final budgets and levy must be adopted before the end of December for certification to the county auditor's office. Again, the final levy cannot exceed the preliminary levy. The city of Hibbing approved a preliminary levy increase of nine point nine nine percent over last year and we are proposing a final levy of an increase of five point nine seven percent increase over last year. And then once the final levy is adopted, it'll be reflected in the twenty twenty four tax statements that'll be printed in March. So here's the example of what a property tax statement looks like that everybody that owns real property will see in March. Um, it's usually got a different color for a different year towards the top border. Um, and it's got two steps at the bottom. Um, it'll show pay stub number one and pay stub number two for those two payments that you make. Many properties have their payment escrowed with their mortgage, so many property owners don't make this payment directly on their own. The next slide, we can start talking about the net tax capacity of Hibbing. So there is a bar graph on this page um and it shows just different classifications of the city of Hibbing. So there's agricultural, residential homestead, residential non homestead, apartments, commercial, industrial, other and then personal property. That would be like your mobile homes and other personal property. And then it's got the different colors. So the blue is twenty twenty one, orange is twenty twenty two and then the gray is twenty twenty three. So you you can see out of that total net tax capacity over on the right, you can see how the different bar graphs have changed over time. Um, and you'll see that the residential homestead has increased at a much faster pace than any of the other classifications and that the commercial and industrial have either been stable or the commercial actually has come down slightly. Um, the next slide shows pie charts of the taxable market value for Hibbing. So for twenty twenty one, that's the first pie chart. Um, there was a taxable market value of over seven hundred and thirteen million dollars in Hibbing in twenty twenty one. And now in twenty twenty three, that has gone up to over eight hundred and forty two million dollars. But in the pie chart, you can also see the different colors um in the key at the bottom that the, you can see that the um lighter blue, that is the commercial industrial. The dark blue is the agricultural, orange is other, yellow is apartment and then the gray is residential. So you can see that the residential makes up most of the pie. Um, sixty five percent was in twenty twenty one and now over seventy percent is residential taxes in twenty twenty three. On the next slide is the average city net tax capacity rate comparison. So I wanted to look at different neighboring communities and just kind of show um residents of Hibbing kind of where we stand with other cities around us. And so the city of Buell and the city of Chisholm, Buell is a little bit less than Hibbing. The city of Chisholm is pretty comparable in tax rate. Um, and then you'll see that the city of Gilbert and the city of Virginia are higher than the city of Hibbing and the city of Grand Rapids is less. So this is just a comparison, just to kind of see where we're at for our tax rate. On the next slide, um has the net tax capacity rate by entity. So this is on your tax bill. You'll have your county line, your city line, school district line and then your special taxing district line. So this shows you what percentage of of your total tax bill is city, what percentage is county and what percentage is school and what percentage is special taxing district. So of your total tax bill, about fifty seven percent of that is your city's levy. So of the proposed twenty twenty four city budget, where does your tax dollar go? The city of Hibbing is proposing an increase to the levy of five hundred and sixty nine thousand two hundred and ninety dollars or the five point nine seven percent over last year and it includes the following levies. The general fund um proposed levy is six million five hundred and fifty two thousand three hundred and twenty two dollars. That includes a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar transfer until it fund the library's deficit. The library fund has a minimum maintenance levy um set by the state of five hundred and eighty six thousand forty three dollars. ETA has a levy of one hundred and five thousand one hundred and seventy seven dollars. That has hasn't been changed for many years. The capital fund proposed levy is seven hundred and ninety five thousand three hundred and ninety eight dollars. Permanent improvements levy, one million one hundred and twelve thousand two thirty six. Tax abatement, seventy five thousand. Debt service, five hundred and ninety six thousand and then OPEB or other post employment benefits of two hundred and ninety thousand. And on the next slides, we'll talk about these in a little bit more detail. So the general fund is the major operating fund of the city. Um, sixty two cents of every dollar on your city tax line on your tax statement is spent on general operations of the city. What were the most significant changes to the revenues? Um, LGA, that is local government aid, is the largest revenue outside of taxes. LGA for twenty twenty four is increasing by nine hundred and fifty five thousand dollars or eleven percent. We also are seeing increased increases. We also are seeing increased, increases in interest income. So the treasury has been increasing interest rates, so we increased the budget for two thousand and twenty four by two hundred thousand dollars for interest income. We also started, or we executed a new lease agreement with the St. Louis County Assessor's Office this year. And then we had rental licensing revenue in the budget based off of a feasibility report, and that would be a revenue offset to a no program we're looking to run for rental licensing. And then the most significant changes to expenditures is a two and a half percent pay increase per collective bargaining agreements for our staff. And then they also have, we've implemented a base pay structure, so we budgeted based off the base pay structure. We had four new budgeted positions. The two would be for the rental enforcement program, and then a fleet manager position, which was already filled in two thousand and twenty three, and then a training officer for the fire department, which had previously been cut and now it was reinstated. Medical insurance that increased twelve percent for active employees for two thousand and twenty four. And then in two thousand and twenty four, we have three elections, because it's a presidential year, so we have the presidential nomination primary in March, the state primary in August, and then the general in November. So since we didn't have any elections in two thousand and twenty three, we do have an increase in our elections budget for two thousand and twenty four. And then we're just seeing increased prices of supplies and fuel, a lot of the same inflationary pressures that other people are seeing in the market. The general fund again, so the general government operations, that's within the general fund, eight cents of every dollar is spent on that. And the different departments that fall under general government are the mayor and city council, the city clerk elections, finance, accounting and auditing, the city administrator, auditing, human resources, building and housing, data processing or I, general IT, and then city hall. Under the general fund, we also have our public safety departments. Sixty cents of every dollar is paid for the police department's operations, and then nine cents of every dollar is paid for fire and ambulance department operations. On the next slide has that fourteen cents of every dollar is for public works operations. And within our public works function, we have engineering, our city garage, streets and alleys, and street lighting. Eight cents of every dollar of your taxes for the city tax line on your tax bill is for city services operations. And the departments that fall under the city services department are recreation administration, parks, the golf course, memorial building, and then the mine view. Seven cents of every dollar would be for other functions. And what falls under other functions of government would be the cemetery, economic development, insurance premiums and deductibles, and then the bus transportation system, which I did want to note that the bus transit is funded primarily by grant dollars and then the fare box revenue that we collect from people who ride the bus. In the library fund, that is eight cents of every dollar, and that funds library operations. Again, we have that minimum maintenance levy of five hundred and eighty six thousand, that's set by the state. But we also have that transfer in to fund the deficit from the general fund, which is an additional two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The HITA fund is one cent of every dollar, and the HITA levy has been consistently set at that one hundred and five thousand, one hundred and seventy seven dollars, it's unchanged for two thousand and twenty four. The statutory maximum is point zero one eight five percent of the city's taxable market value, and this levy is under that statutory maximum. The capital fund is eight cents of every dollar of your city tax bill. And for two thousand and twenty four, we have budgeted capital expenditures for squad cars, mowers, irrigation controls, memorial building compressor, we have some software. There's an asset management software we're looking to purchase, and then also budget software. There's a tractor with a ditch mower, and then some station two fire hall building improvements. This is just to name a few, there are some more, there are more purchases than that. And then the permanent improvements fund, that's eleven cents of every dollar. And for two thousand and twenty four, we have sidewalk improvements, and we share those fifty percent with our residents. There's also a plan for alleys, and then the city paving. There's segments that are not Minnesota state aid eligible, so those would be our city paving project, so that is what this levy covers. One cent of every dollar is for tax abatement. Twenty, the two thousand and twenty four levy for economic development, tax abatement agreements is seventy five thousand dollars. And the city does these agreements to incentivize economic development. We may enter into a development agreement that involves tax abatement incentives, and we currently have four active tax abatement agreements. The debt service levy is six cents of every dollar. And then this levy covers principal and interest payments. When the city of Hibbing issues debt, the principal and interest payments that are due are levied in a debt service levy to cover the debt service payments. The city will be issuing equipment certificates in early two thousand and twenty four to cover equipment purchases from the two thousand and twenty three and the two thousand and twenty four capital budgets. OPEB, that stands for other post-employment benefits. Three cents on the dollar of your city tax is for OPEB. The city of Hibbing has an accrued liability of about thirty million dollars for post-employment benefits of employees. This amount will be paid over many years. The two hundred and ninety thousand levied for these benefits goes into a fund to pay for benefits of retirees. This is similar to event, to funding a pension fund. Business type activities, these are activities that are paid for with fees, not for the, not with a levy. So you have your sanitary and storm sewer fund. Projects that we are doing within that would be lining our sanitary sewer to extend the useful life and avoid infiltration of rainwater into the system. And then we also have an existing sewer study that calls for a one percent increase per year. That increase was incorporated into the two thousand and twenty four budget. The city plans on updating the rate study once the sewer lining CIP is completed. The garbage and recycling fund is also paid for with fees and not the levy on your utility bill, that's where that's paid, and then we have new equipment budgeted for garbage trucks that are, are past their useful life. And then we also will incorporate the sanitation fund into that rate study when we do that as well. So the next slide talks about impacts of the taxpayer. So this is an example, it's a homestead example, and it's based off of the last average residential market value that I had gotten of a hundred and twenty five thousand, two hundred dollars. So for this person who has this average market value, this would be what would happen to their taxes with this five point nine seven percent levy increase. This year, the city of Hibbing got an increase to our fiscal disparity disparities allegation, allocation of four hundred thousand dollars over last year. Plus, our net tax capacity increased. So if your taxes did not change, then your taxes, if your taxable value did not change, then your taxes actually would go down one hundred and sixty eight dollars with the proposed budget increase. That would be if you didn't see any change to your value. If the city levy increased by five point nine seven percent, but the net tax capacity stayed the same citywide, so like the assessors didn't assess at all and the values stayed the same, then your taxes would increase by eighteen dollars and forty two cents. With the decrease in the proposed final levy, the city taxes should decrease by three point three seven percent, or approximately thirty dollars from what was shown on the proposed tax statement that this person just received. And we know that the sales prices of homes have been steadily rising, which is leading to higher valuations on residential property tax statements. So with that being said, the next slide has a property tax relief slide. And I encourage everybody in Hibbing to just go to some of these resources that are available, you may qualify for some of these programs or refunds for property taxes, some of them are income-based, some of them are not, depending on how much your tax changes year over year. And then the next slide is questions and comments. If there's any questions about this presentation or the city's budget, that can be directed towards me, Sheena Mulner, the finance director. And then Rodella LaFrenier, she's the principal appraiser for the St. Louis County Assessor's Office. Her information is here, if anyone has any questions about their taxable market value or the classification of their, their home or property. And then she is also here tonight, so she can answer questions afterwards. I will turn it over then to the mayor for the hearing.
Thank you, Sheena, I appreciate the information you just presented in the orderly fashion that you did. At this time, I guess we could open it up to anybody that has questions, and if we can answer them for you tonight, we will. I know Rodella is here too, from the county, to also eat this and that, so. At this time, the only thing I would ask is if you come forward to give your name and address. And usually, there's about a five-minute timeframe for anybody to speak. But it is open for everybody, and, and I encourage you to do that if you have questions. I'll ask again, is there anybody in the audience that would like to come forward? We certainly would love to hear from you if you have concerns or issues.
Taxes, I'm doubling mine and I really can't understand why.
Sir, to speak, as I mentioned, all right, we want to hear what you have to say, but what we have to have is you need to approach the podium and give me y, your name and your address.
Where?
Your name and your address, where you live.
I'm here, I work at the mine, so I'm.
Okay. If you want to approach the council and talk to us, you need to go to this podium.
Yes.
Yeah, come up to the podium, and then what I would want from you, what is needed, is we would need your, your full name and your address where you live.
So, so I mean, but what am I doing here? Is this, this isn't, this the one I'm supposed to fill out?
No, no, this is just, if you want to speak to the council about your taxes right now, you have the right to do that. But we need your name and your address before you speak.
Okay, Thomas Curran, seventeen fourteen East Twenty Fifth Street.
Yep, go ahead, sir, Tom.
I'm just wondering why my taxes doubled and it's, it's quite a bit of money, I, I would think maybe twenty five dollars or something. But, you know, up to three hundred, I know it isn't a lot for some people, but it's quite a bit of, I'm just wondering why it's doubling of all, of, it's, you know, flabbergasting, kind of.
Do you know what your, has your valuation of your properties changed?
Yeah, I said it went up, but I haven't done any renovations whatsoever. I mean, I need to, but I, you know, I haven't right at the moment, no.
Well, evaluation is going to affect, you know, the rise in evaluation is going to affect taxes, of course. And Rodella, that you're here, would you be able to respond to that? As far as, you know, what causes valuation changes within our community and, and how that's estimated by the assessors? Yeah, I would have you come up to the podium, please, too. Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Rodella LaFrenier, I work for the St. Louis County Assessor's Office. Every year, we determine the value of property based on sales that have taken place in the year before. And as everybody is aware, since COVID, we have seen extreme increases in the prices that properties are selling for. And so that's what we're basing our estimates of the homes on.
Hey, our, can I ask you one question? Does evaluation, when you evaluate a property and what a sale goes for, can always be much different? You know, people say, well, this is, taxes say it's worth this, but a lot of people get well above what, what has been estimated. How does that affect your evaluation in the future, moving forward? You must take that into account.
We do. Our goal is to value properties as close to their actual selling price as we can, but we are always a year behind, so we're looking at setting our values here again based in January, and that'll be based on everything that sold in the year before, so there's constantly a lag. Typically, when you see prices increasing like this, then people should expect that they can sell their homes for more than what their appraisal says on their tax statements.
Okay, thank you. It's Tom, right?
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, I guess it's, it's kind of a snowball effect, is kind of what Rodella had just mentioned. As prices go up on homes, even if you didn't do anything, I would assume the value of the homes around you, everything is reflective. And the county is assessing based on how homes are being sold in your area, which probably raises the value, which reflects our taxes. But, you know, our taxes, we have a five point nine seven, we stayed pretty consistent with our increases. And, and, you know, and tried to, our, our proposed levy versus what our final levy is, has been way less than what our proposed pre-levy, tax levy was set at. But we don't control what people sell their homes at, I guess is what I'm saying. And that does get reflected in the value of your home, which does raise your taxes based on your home value.
Okay, but I was kind of figuring my, you know, linear equation of the algorithmic. My house has not doubled for any of this, twenty twenty four. And it's, um, tax.
Okay, Sheena, maybe you could help me with this, I.
I guess all I can say is that the city doesn't get more money. Our levy is our levy. And then basically, it's distributed based off the valuations of all the properties. So if, I mean, if your value goes up, it's not necessarily at the same rate, you know, it's not going to be like double the rate means double the levy kind of a thing, it depends on how other values in the city are going up in comparison to yours. And then also different tax rates for different types of classifications, it's just really not really just a simple, like a simple formula, but I can, you know, I can look at it with you after this meeting, if you want to look at yours specifically.
I'm not sure if I could sell it for like five thousand dollars, but I.
Sir, Tom, did I have you come back up to the podium, please? Yeah, just so, so we record the conversation, be it as a public hearing, we want to make sure that anybody wants to watch this later, they'll hear your comments, and they're, they're important for us and they're important for everybody else in the city to be able to hear, thank you.
Okay.
So, uh, if you can just repeat what you just said down there, so.
I, I, I'm not sure if my house went up, I mean, it's valued more of like forty five thousand dollars, I think more than I bought it for, and I'm not even sure if I could sell it for that.
Sure.
And it kind of is a lot of work, things have gone a little bad, but I mean, I'm not su, I was thinking about replacing some things this summer, but um, financially, no, I couldn't.
I'm sure, like after this meeting or at a later date, Rodella would be happy to go through just what sales were maybe in your neighborhood and show you some comparables and show you kind of where your value is, where it's at.
Well, I prob, you're probably, what your value is probably right, I'm just it's just a little high, I was, I wasn't expecting a three hundred dollar extra hit. And I don't even know, like I said, I don't even know if I could sell it for that amount, anyway, who knows? That's why I'm here, just, you know, asking what's going on. But it seems like, you know, I, I know people that are, are going to be basically paying a lot more than I am, that's for sure. I understand inflation, but, you know, remember, we're all getting hit with this inflation too. And so now this is just another bill on us, try to burden.
Tom, I, I, I think the offer for you to sit down with Rodella and Sheena to discuss your personal situation is on the table. And, and we can't really deal with anything right here in that scenario, but if you can get together with them in the future and set up a time.
To with, um.
Sheena?
With me.
Oh, you're Sheena?
I'm Sheena, and then Rodella is right, right there in the audience.
Yep.
What is, when am I supposed to do that, anyway? I'm pretty busy.
Sure, right after the meeting, I can get your information.
Like, you work, you work in this building, right?
Yep.
Okay, well, I'll see if I can do that. I don't know if there's anything you could really do. I'm just wondering why, this is why I'm here.
Sure.
Thank you, Tom.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Um, I do have a question for Rodella. If, maybe you could help explain why the commercial value. If maybe you could help explain why the commercial values continue to be flat and why the residential values continue to carry the majority of the tax burden?
Because our values are based on what has sold this year. If you look at the selling prices for homes, they're selling for 10, 15, 20, 30% more year over year. Whereas our commercial sales, we're not seeing them increasing. In fact, next year, I'm anticipating they're probably going to drop again. So the same thing can happen if residential prices started going down. Then you would see, you know, the residential share drop and more of that be transferred to the commercial properties. It's just based completely on selling prices. So in order for the commercial values to increase, we'd have to see people paying substantially more for commercial properties year over year, like they are for residential.
So having heard that, then are you projecting that the residential tax, they're going to go up again?
The values.
If you're predicting that the commercial is going to go down?
I think the commercial is going to go down a little bit. And I think the residential is going to go up a little bit, but not as strongly as we've seen the increases in the last couple of years prior to this.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that.
At this time, again, I'll open it up to the public for anybody to feel free to come up to the podium. And we welcome your concerns and questions.
My name is Ed Nelson, 10796 Fossil Road.
Thank you.
And there were some properties that sold out in our area, like 40 acres. And in my opinion, they paid way over the value of them. And they're hunting properties. Oaks are coming up, buying these, these 40s for hunting and paying way more than we would pay for agricultural land. So whatever that's worth, I don't know. When they figure these values, these sales as comparable sales, but unless I sold part of my farm for hunting land, I'm not going to make that kind of money, so.
Thank you. Rodella could, yeah, that's another interesting one. How does that affect? I understand your farming land and yes, there are people coming from down south that'll pay anything to get their 80 or 40 acres for hunting. And how does that affect his farming or agricultural land?
So when we look at land, we just pretty much look at land.
Okay.
40 acres is 40 acres. But if you are using your property agriculturally, the value, I mean, we may set the exact same value on it, but they pay a lower tax rate. So there, there are tax breaks for agricultural property. It's just not reflected in the value.
All right, thank you. Anybody else that wishes to come up to podium? Please do. I'll ask two more times so that we are fair here. Anybody else that would wish to come before? We certainly want to hear your concerns. Thank you.
Barbara Manson, 373755 West, Yon Hiving. My husband and I bought a manufactured home about three years ago. The property's taxes started out at 400 some dollars. They went to $510. 2023, they went to $1,498. And now for 2024, they're going to $1,800. This is a older manufactured home. I lost my husband in August. Now I'm living on social security. So I, how am I supposed to pay this? I have a mortgage that I have to pay plus, you know, all the usual bills. So, you know, I'm going to lose my home if the taxes keep increasing like this because I can't afford it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Sheena, based on what you said, one of your last slides talked about, there, there is some slides that, your last slide had some websites that you can reach out to for refunds or support. And I am very sorry for the loss of your husband.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Will this PowerPoint presentation be on our website?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
At this time, is there anybody else that would like to step forward and, and express their concerns? I'll ask one more time. Is there, at this time, is there anybody else that would like to come forward? We certainly would want to hear your comments and concerns. Okay, Andy, to close the public hearing?
Take a motion in a second to close the hearing.
Okay, I just want to ask one more time if anybody, I don't want to shut anybody out that came here. And if you're uncomfortable to do it, please feel comfortable to come up before us. And so I'll ask one more time. Is there anybody else that is interested in coming up and speaking to the council regarding your taxes? Hearing done, I will be looking for a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close the hearing?
Motion by Councilor Fossil or, or by Councilor Hildebrand? Any discussion? Hearing done, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries. So we will now move towards a resolution to adopt our final levy. And the city budget, 20, 24 city budget, 2023 final levy. We offer a resolution number 23-1204, final 2024 final budget, city budget, and 2023 levy. I would need a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a motion from Councilor Hoffman Sockman?
Support.
Supports by Councilor Whitney? Any discussion? Hearing done, all in favor for setting our final levy at 5.97, is that correct, Sheena?
Yep.
Say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries. I'll levy a sub. So I'll look for a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
So moved by Councilor Fossil?
Support.
Support by Councilor Hildebrand? Any discussion? Hearing done, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries. Thank you for everybody who came up there today. I really appreciate it.